Let's bow our heads for prayer. Father in heaven, I pray for your spirit to guide us tonight as we discuss your work here in Minnesota. We ask for your spirit to fill us and if there are more people that need to be here, that you'll help them to come. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen. I'm gonna give you a little preview. Do all of you, I hope, maybe receive the email that comes out once a month from the conference office? Okay, well, I'm gonna give you a preview of what I'm writing for the next one, okay, for a brief devotional. I was, actually, I can't remember where I was. Some city somewhere, maybe it was even Minneapolis, or maybe it was out in Maryland. I don't remember. But I was in my pickup truck, sitting at a light, a red light. And there wasn't a lot of traffic around, few cars, but a police officer pulls up behind me and turns on his lights. And I'm thinking to myself, you know, I'm not even moving. What did I do? My tags are okay, my, you know, license is not expired. What's going on? And so the light turns green and, of course, I sit there. I don't go anywhere. And he gets out of his car and he comes up to the window and I roll down the window and he didn't ask me for my license and registration. He says, "I need you to stop traffic for me." "What?" "Come again." He says, "Yeah, I need you to pull up there into the intersection and stop with your flashers going so that traffic can't come across, because I need to push a car across the intersection and I don't want anybody to hit me." "Okay." And he's given me a minute to get lined up. And I look behind me, or off to the side there, he backs his car up and there's this terrified-looking lady sitting in her car, which apparently had broken down at the wheel, and she's sitting there at the wheel. And he backs around and gets lined up, because he has one of these things on the front, on his grill, you know, for doing exactly this, as Jimmy knows how that works. And so he gets lined up and then he waves me forward. And by this time, I'm feeling kind of powerful, you know? And so there's cars, actually, there weren't any cars coming right there. It was kind of empty at that moment. And so I roar up into the middle of this intersection and I stop and I roll down my window and as cars start to come over the hill, I'm like holding my hand out, you know? And the police officer pushes the car across the intersection. And then he waves me on, "You can leave." As I was thinking about this story, I realized, I thought about how I felt at that moment. I felt kind of cool, kind of exhilarating, because I'd been asked to do something by an authority that actually gave me the permission to break the rules, right? Here, I'm running a red light and whatever it was. And I thought to myself, you know what? The King of the universe has given us a job. And we don't feel that way about it normally. You know, we're like, "Oh, do I have to? You know, I might miss my favorite TV program," or whatever it might be. But the command he has given us in Matthew 28, which we all know, right, is to go make disciples. And what we should be feeling is, "Really? Me? Why me?" You know, this, and we should be feeling really quite powerful, because what does he say? "I am with you always, even to the end of the world." "You have permission," and when you combine this with what he told his other disciples at the time, you know, "I'm giving you authority to cast out demons," and all this kind of stuff. I mean, we should be walking around with our chest puffed out and our head held high, saying, "I have been commanded to do something by the King of the universe. He picked me." I mean, that's pretty awesome, to go and make disciples. And I'm actually gonna talk about this, so I won't ruin it now. Let's just leave it there and start with prayer, and then I'll get into this a little bit more as we go into our presentation, okay? Let's bow our heads. Father in heaven, I ask that you're, again, that your Holy Spirit will be sent here and that you will help us to recognize the incredible privilege we have been given to cooperate with you in the salvation of this world, of the people of this world. Lord, we, I confess that even I sometimes maybe am not as excited as I should be by what you've asked us to do, and so, sorry, we're sorry for that. Help us to recognize the amazing thing that you've done by choosing us. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen. All right, welcome to the, hey Steve, welcome. Did I just mess it up? Oh, I just, there we go, handshake again. Welcome to the 2025 Town Hall Meeting. This is about my 10th or 11th one, and I've only been here two years, second time. I was coming as pastor before. I remember when they started these. And I also remember when I first came back, when I had left, it wasn't very well-attended. And when I came back and they said, "All right, we're still doing Town Hall Meetings," I thought, "Oh, do we really need to be doing this?" But after the first year, I was sold. This is great. People were coming out and it's fantastic. Now, I don't want us to stop. This is wonderful. So I'm gonna just give you a whirlwind tour of kind of where we're at and the highlights. A lot of this stuff you know, but I'll bring you up to date on where we're at. As you probably know, the conference is financially in difficult circumstances, as we'll learn with our treasurer here soon. Actually, I need to introduce, just in case everybody doesn't know, Galen and Eric, if you'll stand up real quickly. Eric Makua is our executive secretary and Galen is our treasurer, our vice president for finance and vice president for advancement, administration. And so they'll be talking to you here shortly. We're struggling. It's not just us. It's pretty much most conferences across the whole North American division. This is not a management problem. This is an economy and when costs go way up.
Inflation.
Inflation, that's the word I was looking for. Totally blanked on. You know, these are just realities that we're all facing and dealing with. And so, but I, and I don't, last I looked, and I don't know if this is still sure or not, but Minnesota was one of four conferences in the entire North American division where tithe was up. And still is. Okay, so that's wonderful. And I told the Detroit Lakes people today, "Thank you for remaining faithful and returning tithes and offerings to the Lord. It makes a difference." We've still got a long way to go. We're in an awfully deep hole. So a jump in tithe helps us, but it doesn't fix everything. So we'll talk about that more. Our caste position is critical too. And that just means the ability to pay bills, even though the money may exist somewhere. It's not something that we can access real easily, so that's a thing. So we're having to be very, very, very careful. And what that means, at least especially in the office, is we had to let some people go for that. And that means that we're struggling just trying to keep up, and frankly, we can't. And so it's, then that reflects too, as people get frustrated, saying, "What's going on, guys?" And we're like, "We're trying, we're trying, but we just can't keep up." So these are just realities, not complaints, but where we're at, and hopefully, things will turn around over time. We did do a lot of work, did I, this probably happened after the last Town Hall Meeting? I can't remember. Did it happen after the last Town Hall Meeting where we did all of the changes? Okay, we did, we made a lot of cuts all over the place. And those cuts are just now beginning to kick in. So we're hopefully, over the next two years or so, we'll start seeing some relief there. We're just hoping it's enough. We're not sure yet, but we're hoping it's enough to be able to get reserves back into where we need to be, into kind of a region of stability financially speaking. So, but again, thank you again for your faithfulness, because our only income is tithes and offerings. That's all we've got. And so when tithes and offerings drop off, then everything in the entire conference drops off as well. Maplewood Academy also, we'll talk about this more in depth later, but the financial realities are tough. Just a broad overview. We've done a lot of study on the financial side of things. And big picture is that we can charge in tuition about half of what it actually costs to educate a student. We get above that and the families simply can't afford it. So that means that we simply need to accept the reality that every single year, we need to raise half our budget, which is not impossible. There are schools that do that. We don't have a full-time development director, which we would need to be able to do that. But this is a reality. And this is not just Maplewood. This is everywhere. No Adventist school anywhere is able to fund the school through tuition. It just doesn't happen these days. It used to be, in the old days, you could do that, but it doesn't happen anymore. So this is just reality. But the thing about Adventist education is that we're not running a business. You know, if we were trying to make money or run a business with Adventist education, we would never even have started. It's never been something that paid for itself. But what we're doing is not a business. What we're doing is we're fighting in the great controversy. And we are training young people, right, to be the future leaders of God's mission in Minnesota. And I'm sorry, but public schools, they're just not teaching the kids that, right? And that's the only places they're going to get it. So this is, if we start losing our schools, Maplewood or any other school, it's always a strategic loss. It's a strategic back step in the great controversy. And so we need to do whatever we can do to make sure that we have consistent training grounds for our young people. Okay. One of the things that we're working on right now, very specifically, is an increased prayer emphasis. The situations that we're facing are untenable. We, there's no way we can solve some of these issues. And so where does that leave us? And is that a bad thing? No, no. We, I often feel like that maybe our financial difficulties are something of a gift from God. Because if we had all the money we needed, how much time would we spend looking to God for direction and help, right? And so in a way, as with so often the way that God works, what looks like a curse turns out to be a blessing in the end. And so in many ways, the situation is driving us to prayer, and that's a positive thing. Gavin Anthony, which I was hoping you could meet, but he's not here. He will be with us next year. And he is leading the prayer emphasis. He is the Strategic Planning Assistant Director for Strategic Planning and also Plan Giving and Trust Services and those kinds of things as well. And so this was actually something when we were talking to him about. He says, "I really want to do prayer ministry. This is something that we really, really need." And he's been doing a fantastic job so far. Wednesdays is Prayer Day at the office. And we spend a solid hour in prayer. And a little, not too long ago, we even started doing some fasting on that day as well. And it's been really a fantastic thing. And now we're starting to pray and think about, how do we move this prayer emphasis to all of Minnesota? You know, so that we're all participating in this. So hopefully, you'll be seeing some things in the future that will guide us more into that. Anybody ever hear of the SALT program? They run it at Southern Adventist University. Okay. What it stands for is Service and Leadership Training. And this is a program that is a partnership between It Is Written and the University at Southern. And so I approached John Bradshaw, actually, two years ago. And we were in a meeting unrelated, and I just sat down by him and I said, "Would you ever consider doing the SALT program at Union College?" And he didn't miss a beat. He said, "We would love to." And so it's been two years, taken a while to do it, but we have, oh, the SALT program, like I put up here, is a, it's kind of a, it's a practical evangelistic program for students. It's for anybody. It's not just for theology majors. It's for absolutely anybody. So we hope that nursing students and business students and anybody will go through this program. Because the idea, of course, is that no matter what your work you're doing, you are a disciple maker for Jesus, right? And so this is training in how to do that. And so this is now, as of just recently, an official program of Union College. And it's a partnership, not between Union College and It Is Written, right, yet. It's a partnership between It Is Written and the Minnesota Conference. Because, number one, we have a vision to become a producer, right? A premier producer of pastors, teachers, missionaries, and tent makers. And I was talking to the people at Union. I says, "We're not getting enough. You're getting some, but there's just people that aren't coming to do these kinds of things. What do we do to help increase the interest and the enrollment and things like that on these kinds of programs?" And so this is one of the things that we're working on. It can be a standalone, I mean, it can be a part of the degree. And so it takes care of all your religion credits. You get to go on a mission trip and some things like that. But here's what's kind of cool, is you don't even have to be a student at Union College. If you want to, you can say, "I will go for one semester only." And you'll come away, you can go through the program and you'll come away with a certificate. And anybody can do it. Doesn't matter how old you are, nothing. You can come down there and go through that training program with top-notch professors and all kinds of stuff. Plus, run an evangelistic series, go on a mission trip, do some of these things, and you'll come away basically a trained Bible worker from this program. So this is something that, it is, I mean, Minnesota Conference doesn't have the money to do this, but a donor stepped forward and, two of them actually. And they're funding this through the Minnesota Conference to make this go. And so hopefully, you're gonna start seeing marketing materials and things like that coming out soon. So when you see it, help other people to understand what it is. And who knows, if there's young people, or actually anybody, it doesn't matter, that's interested, hey, send them down and they'll be able to go through this program. It won't be free, but it won't be super expensive either, I think, one semester of classes. Okay, all right. How are we doing on our, the progress on our vision to become a premier producer of pastors, teachers, missionaries, and tent makers? We had been trying to reach a goal of 10 theology and education majors from Minnesota, and we have met that goal. I just recently found out that we've got one more education major, so we've done that one. So whoops, hooray. We did well on that one. Student missionaries, whoops, student missionaries, not so great. We were hoping to have seven. We're not quite done, so this year, we may have some more. But we'll see how that goes. Cross-cultural missionaries, we were only looking for two families. We have one, but so far, not on the other one. And the mission trip participants, we'll get some more before we're done, but I don't think we're gonna hit the 400 mark. So if anybody wants to go on a mission trip and wants to organize it, do it and then tell me, so I can add it to our list here, right? And there are some others. I know of at least one church that, there are maybe two churches, they're planning mission trips this year. So that's something that y'all can do. You don't need us at the conference or anything. You can just say, "Hey, why don't we go do," and it doesn't even have to be outside of the US. It can be inside the US. So if you want to organize something like that, that'd be fantastic. Just let me know, so I can add it to our thing. Tent makers. Tent makers is, if you don't know, this is the idea that no matter what your career is, you are a minister, a disciple maker, right? So we take this from the Apostle Paul, who funded his disciple-making ministry by making tents. That's why we call it tent makers, because we borrowed the term. And we've far exceeded the, our goal of having 100 people in that network. Jim Moon, Pastor Jim Moon, has been running this on a volunteer basis, for the most part. And I can't remember, the last time I looked at his list, he had more like closer to 200 people as part of that network. So good things are happening there. Got a long way to go, but some good things. Okay, so for the future, the thing about running something like, becoming a premier producer of pastors, teachers, missionaries, and tent makers, that's wonderful, but after a while, people kind of get tired of it and, "Let's do something new," whatever. So we're gonna do a refresh come the next constituency session in May. And what we've been talking about, we've got a long way to go. We need to meet with the rest of the group at the office and such. But Gavin and I, we've been talking about, let's just stick with Matthew 28 straight. This is the general conference mission statement, actually. But you can boil it down to "make disciples." And there's nobody here that's going to argue with the idea that we should be disciple makers, right? Every seventh-day Adventist says, "Yeah, we need to be doing that." Our question is, is how? How do I do it, right? And so what we can spend the next several years doing is answering that question and training each other and us, you know, how do we do this? How do we become effective disciples and disciple makers? So just repackaged for freshness. Okay, and then finally, this will be my last slide. One of the things that we've been talking about, we have two new people that are really working full-time with North Star Camp. And one is Daniel Borha, our new youth director, and the other one is Joel Springer. His wife is here with us. And he's the camp caretaker. And we've been brainstorming together a bit about what can we do in the future? Because there's a lot of potential that we can use North Star Camp for. Money is an issue, yeah, but that, let's pretend it's not. What could we do possibly that might make this an even more powerful ministry? And I used to be in Maryland too with Joel. And the camp where he worked before, they had a nature center. And so he said, "Why don't, what if we were to do something like that at North Star Camp?" And I was at the nature center often, and I lived an hour away. But this was a gathering place, especially on Sabbaths. There were snakes that the kids could play with and there were, you know, they had big, huge animals. We had a guy that had a contact with the Smithsonian there, Floyd Murdock. And he had huge displays of birds and just all sorts of stuff. And it was a magnet for school groups and things like that. So Joel had already been scouting out. He says, "There's a perfect place that looks right out over the Mississippi River and, you know, where we could put this." I'm like, "That's fantastic. I have no idea how we would pay for something like that, but it's great." And school groups could come out and use it. We can maybe make a nature playground. I don't know if you've seen those before, but it's a playground, but it's all out of natural materials. And kids come in and they can build stuff, you know, shelters and different things like this. And just gets them out in nature to do things. What if we were to make the trails more hikeable, put signs out and maybe name them? And turn the area into like a spiritual retreat center? And it wouldn't even have to be only for Adventists. There could be people in the area, they would like to bring their church group out and do a spiritual retreat. Why not? There's extra income. There's all kinds of things. What if we were to put in some more camping and RV sites that people are able to use it more, because our cabin space is limited? So these are all ideas that we're just kind of knocking around. Nothing planned, nothing firm yet, but just things that we've been talking about. But it gets me excited anyway about things that could happen at North Star Camp. So any questions on anything that I've been talking about before I turn it over to our Vice President for Administration? Or we can save everything up for the end too. Okay, good. All right. Elder Makua, it is your time. Is there another microphone?
Thank, mic testing, mic testing. Mic testing, one, two, one, two. Thank you very much, Elder Scoggins, for that wonderful presentation. And also thank you for your leadership at the conference. We appreciate you being there. And of course, you're giving us the vision of where we are going. And I also want to take this moment before I give my presentation to thank you for coming here. Thank you. This tells us that you have the interest of this church in your heart. Because the bylaws and the constitution reminds us that every year, we need to come and report to you what the conference does, all it's doing. You've given us the work to do. We are at the conference on your behalf. While you are making disciples outside there, training you, we are also really equipping. So we are all working together, and that's why I love this quotation of Ellen G. White. Ellen G. White, in the devotion book called Our Father Cares. And she says on this, on this date, August 29, page 245, "Now is the time to prepare for the coming of our Lord. Leadness to meet Him cannot be attained in a moment's time. Preparatory to that solemn scene, there must be vigilant waiting and watching." Can't just sit down waiting and watching, but also that waiting and watching should be combined with honest work. That's what disciple-making is. That is our business. We have no any other agenda than to prepare people, God's people, for His coming. While they are also calling their friends, their relatives, to invite them, to tell them that Jesus is coming soon. And that should be our responsibility. We've not been called just to sit down in the church and warm the bench, listen to the sermon, go back home, wait for another Sabbath. There's work to be done. And with that said, want to bring to your attention that in our conference, we have about 113 congregations. Out of that, 90 are churches. The rest are companies and groups. That is where we stand as of now. Our desire is to see these churches and groups keep on growing. That is our desire. And in this, we have seven directors. Directors in charge of ministries. The associate directors. And four volunteer directors, of which we have, most directors have more than one ministry. We are very thin in terms of operation in our conference, very thin. If we were financially sound, at least we could have grown to maybe more than 10 directors. So we appreciate with the team that we have at the conference, though we are thinly stretched, we're still doing the work. And we are close to 30 pastors in our conference. And when I say 30 pastors, some of them part-time, some are volunteers, full-time. And in that, we have about seven Bible workers and one church planter. We have one church planter in the alley of Blaine, Minnesota. A lady who's doing a good work, and of course, we expect to have a church plant there. But you can see, if you see this number 30, and of course, you will end up seeing our membership. If you divide, you will see that even our pastors, honestly speaking, ladies and gentlemen, we are a little stretched. But we'll work with what we have, because money talks. You know, our business, as the president said, Elder Scoggins said, our business is, as I've said also before, our business is not Coca-Cola or McDonald's or any other. Our business is soul-winning. I keep on saying that. That is the mission we have, to tell people Jesus is coming again. As it stands now, if you remember, I've been giving this report from 2020. There was a time in our conference, we had more than 10 open districts. Last year, we had two, and this is where we stand. We have an open position for a pastor in Hutchinson Church. That's where Maplewood Academy is. We are still looking for a pastor there. And we have an open district that's northwest. Pastor David Jan used to be the pastor. And if you remember, we used to have an iron range district, but we closed that down. We closed that. So on the northern side, we'll have three districts. closed that. So on the northern side, we'll have three districts, the Ruth Side and then the Blackberry, that area district together with the Northwest. So we are still looking for a pastor for the Northwest District. This year, the North American Division came with a strategy of soul winning and called it Pentecost 2025. And when we got it last year, we called the pastors and we told the pastors, by faith, this work we do here is by faith. How many people would you like to see coming to our church? And at the beginning of the year, the pastors gave the number, by faith, I like five to one within that. And of course, the North America came with an initiative, something to encourage us by giving us $3,000. Of course, the training. And of course, interesting enough, friends, the pastors gave us the number. And this year, around during the pastors meeting, they, we call it a retreat, called the pastors, say, where are you in terms of this goal you gave us in January? Some said, we are halfway. I'm about to finish. I'm about to start. And I came to realize that in life, you need to have a goal. If you're playing soccer or any game, you have to have a goal. Where are you going as a person? So that's what we are challenging the pastors. And of course, we can see the outcome has been very quite interesting. And we started the membership at the beginning of the year with 11,753, our membership on record in the books. That's how we started the year. And when we met at the very beginning, we said, we want to ask God to give us this number. And you'll see the, and the goal, what we expect as a conference. 11,753 this year. Let me see. All right. From that time, from 11,000 in January, we have added 477. That means we have had baptism of 315. Praise God for that. We have also requested people by professional faith. What does that mean, professional faith? Yes, they've been baptized, and they want to join the church, maybe from another country, maybe another faith, those who've been baptized by Immanion. We encourage them to join the church. And of course, we have about 64, 64 people who have decided to transfer to Minnesota. We encourage people. The thing is, if people have come to our church and you've seen them, they have interest, let's encourage them to be members, which means when they become members, we also engage them in the work. True or false? Yeah. As much as we are celebrating people coming to Minnesota, and the number has been added, we also have people have dropped. Whenever there's people coming in, there are people also going out. And how do people go out? Maybe people move from Minnesota to California? That one, we can't stop it. There are also people who do what? Who rest. We can't, is there where we can stop people from dying? That one, we can't. But we can also close the door for the missing, and of course, those who have been removed. That's about 80 from January to date. We have, that's a big number, by the way, missing 50 people. You know the story of Jesus Christ looking for one sheep that was lost? It's our responsibility, friends, to look for those who are missing in our, in our churches. If you come to church and you see your neighbor who sit next to is missing for the next, for the last two Sabbath, take a phone call, call that person, hey, buddy, I've not seen you in church for the last two weeks. What's going on? Are you okay? Are you sick? Let's reclaim the people who have, who have missed. True or false? Yeah. Thank you. See, quickly, from 2021, I was looking around at the, at our history. To 2024, at the beginning of the year, 11,753. So 2021, 10,000. 2025, as it stands now, with the 470 people gained, where are we as it stands of, as per yesterday? This is where we stand. Woo, praise God. Which number is that? 12,059. This is the first time in the history, look here in Minnesota, from 10,000. And as I went back to 2004, we were about 4,000 to 5,000, 2004. That's about 20 years ago. There is growth here in this conference. So for the first time in the history, Elder Bowers, for the first time in the history of Minnesota Conference, we stand at 12,000. Again, as we started the year, we challenge the pastors. And we said, can we have a 3.5% growth? This is our goal, that we want to have the membership net goal, which means the incoming and those who are coming in and those who are being removed or transferring, we want at least to have by the end of this year, December 31st, 2025, to have a projection of 12,216. That's 3.5. It's possible. In 2023, we had a 3.7%, which means we can reach 3.5. That's the net gain, net. Pray that we have this goal. Which tells me, and that's why it's interesting, and it's good to have. You look at these numbers, I don't know whether you can see, your eyes are sharp. It's okay. I get excited that something, look, this is the report from the Mid-American Union. You can see, let's see the number here. Let me just come closer. These numbers here. Lucky Mountain has 17,000. Minnesota, at the beginning of March, is 11,000. Kansas, Nebraska, these are two states, 12,000, 12,300. So if we get 12,216 around this, we'll be ahead of Kansas, Nebraska. If we do better, we'll be the number two conference in the whole union. It is possible. It is possible. Which means then, we are being called to, to make disciples. There's work to be done. And it's exciting, it's exciting. When we find our conference coming, once upon a time, when we were number six, coming to number two, I am fully convinced, very persuaded, if we work and walk together, work and walk together as members of the family of God, we will reach that goal. Yes, I'm excited about the membership. But is it true on the records? You know, we look at the attendance. You can see, since we started pushing about the attendance, because we can, we are talking about 12,000. But how many people attend every Sabbath? And we have been challenging our pastors and leadership to make sure that you take the attendance of people who come to church. Do you do it in your church every Sabbath? Do you take attendance? Scott, you do it here? Okay, good. Very important. You can see, out of, in 20, this year, I'm surprised. We've been talking to these through our pastors. By September, it's only 20, 50 churches that did their attendance. Last year, at least, there was some improvement. Yeah, out of about 113 churches. And of course, our attendance has gone up. We have average attendance of about 4,500. If all the churches were taking attendance, I believe we could have been about 8,000. And this is, it will help us when we talk about this, it will also resonate, translate to financial giving. Because of course, as you heard from the president, Elder Scoggins, the only avenue we get the funds is through the tithe and offering. So the more we increase the attendance, the more we bring people to church, the more we have more funding for God's work. And the Sabbath School, of course, we encourage people to attend Sabbath School. The Sabbath School attendance has increased to 942 from 800. So I will really strongly recommend knowing where our members are. If they don't attend, call them and let's take attendance in our church. So we can have a true picture of where we are as a conference. And I thank you in advance for doing that. Okay, quickly. When we take the attendance and the membership, we call something the Church Vitality. I've been presenting this, the health of the church. They describe it in three, four ways, declining churches, pratu, growing, and multiplying. That one, the multiplying is when we have one church plant, a church has planted another church. That's called multiplying church. And the growing, you can see the growing as it stands. There's a growth, there's a number, it is moving from 31 to 37. There's a small upward trajectory for that 7. And the declining, you can see in 2020 to 2023 and 24, the number went down. So I would recommend at least that number to keep on. We don't want our churches to decline. We want them to move from declining to pratu, to start growing and multiplying. And that is work. When we emphasize on disciple making, when we, with the leadership of our president, when everybody becomes a disciple maker, you will see these numbers change. And I want us all to be involved in God's work, not only to the pastors. All have been called to be disciple makers. Okay. Quickly now, because I want us to spend time on the finances. Take another five minutes, and then I'll give my, hand the mic to our treasurer. As it stands now, we have 12 still Adventist schools in our conference. All right, see, in terms of enrollment, this year, by September, the number went up from 394 in 2023, 2024 school year to 20, to 397. In 2024, 2025, the number went to, has increased to 414. And the biggest increase, of course, we can see there is Menetonga Christian Academy. And of course, yes, that's where we have the biggest growth. I can see that. That's what stands in our 12 schools. We have about 66 teachers and supporting staff who help us in our schools. Out of that, we have about 35 teachers, part-time seven. Yeah, that is full-time. And nine full-time supporting staff. So this is how our schools stand in terms of the enrollment and the supporting staff together with the teachers. Okay, quickly, let's look at the youth ministry. Because whenever we have youth, it gives us the excitement, truly remind us that there's a future in this church. We want young people in our churches. And we have a very vibrant youth ministries director. Daniel has done a good job. Quickly, give me this report. They had an adventure of family camp. And look at the attendance. Wow. Went up from 20, 221 last year to 466. That number needs to bump over a little bit. 466 this year. It's a big number. At North Star Camp, that's our place to be. Yeah. Wow. Praise God for that. This Bible Ball Experience, we had that this year. And seven teams from Minnesota, out of the seven, six got the first place in North American Bible Ball Experience. It was in May, April 26, 2025, in Battle Creek, Michigan. The young people are very excited working for God and being in God's vineyard. Pathfinder on Papas Fair, 10 clubs. They started 650 plus attendance, May 4th, they met all in one day in Maplewood Academy. 626 campus this year, North Star Camp. Wow. Look at the number, 626. How has it been? Look, from 314 in 2018, all the way last year was 377. Oh, that is, that is adventurous camp. I'm sorry. That's adventurous camp. This is where we are this year. 460, North Star Camp. From 400, 377 last year to 460. Big increase. We thank God for our facility or the campus in North Star Camp. That was the decisions. That's a good place to win source for Christ. About 169 campus accepted Jesus, their Savior. 69 campus requested for baptism. 100 campus requested for Bible studies, Bible studies and prayer. And 187 campus recommit their life to Christ. And of course, six campuses were baptized during the summer camp. So it's very important when we invest on the young people. Very important. I emphasize that, the word very important. Thank you. All right. This is a Pathfinder Papas. They had 710 campus, 20 clubs. That was in the month of, month of August. One more minute to go. Adventure of Festival Fall, this was recently, 600 attendees. The numbers are going up and up for the young people. And we should always invest on the young people. Minnesota Conference Car Meeting, how many people come for the car meeting, by the way? Very, thank you. See, it's a big number. I would strongly encourage us to attend the car meeting. Very, very important. Plan for the car meeting. June, the second week of June, it is a blessing. It's a blessing to attend the car meeting. The number was very high. And of course, we have, we had that Ty Gibson, wonderful speaker. Next year, we have another wonderful speaker. And I would like to encourage you to start planning for the car meeting. And I said I'll be promoting the car meeting way before time. All right, we had the Twin Cities African Car Meeting. We had a big one on the Sabbath, about attendance was 2,650. Last week, in St. Cloud, we had a church leadership summit. They registered members, 710 people, wonderful event that happened there. All right. And lastly, as I see, I said 520 is 520. I will request as I sit down, how many people receive these Liberty magazine? How many people receive Religious Liberty magazine? Wow. Like to, to encourage you to get, I wish, we receive and we send it, know your religious liberty, know your religious freedom. You need to know where we are, especially with all things that are happening in the world. You need to know where we are in terms of our religious liberty. Very important. We normally send this magazine to every church, those who've registered. A lot of people are receiving. Make sure that through your church, you register, and we shall, we send these magazines to you. Thank you very much. Believe that we'll have questions after this, unless somebody has a burning question. If there is not, I'll hand this mic to our vice president for finance, Elder Bowers.
Thank you, Eric. Interesting. I'm not sure most people find finances real interesting. They're probably only interesting to people who work in them day in, day in and day out. And I understand, but I want to go quickly through our, oops, wrong way. Through our financial picture. I've got two different presentations I'm going to give. One is on the conference and we're right on the conference. And I'm also going to give one on where we are with Maplewood Academy and where Maplewood Academy stands. So as our president told you earlier, the conference has been, over the last two to three years, financially very, in very difficult times. Mainly because we don't have any source of income except tithe, tithe and offerings. And over the last two years, our tithe was flat. We didn't have any tithe growth to say in 2024 or in 2023. And so it's been difficult when you're budgeting and inflation keeps going up 4% and 5% to figure out how you're going to make your budget work. And especially when the, the goal of the Adventist church is that you're supposed to budget on 95% of the previous year's tithe. Well, that makes it really difficult to put a budget together when you're taking 5% off the top of what you didn't make budget the previous year. So this year, in order to get our budget to balance, and it wasn't balanced, and that's why we had to make some serious decisions, we budgeted on 100% of tithe, which is the first time I've ever budgeted on 100% of any type of income as a finance officer. But let's get into the finances. I just want to show you I just want to show you where we're at with our balance sheet. And our balance sheet basically tells us the, how, um, I guess the health of our organization, because it really tells you where we're at. We had four-point-three million dollars in assets compared to twenty-twenty-four, we had four-point-five. So basically, we haven't gone, we're pretty much the same as where we were at. In our liabilities, we had two-point-nine this year to two-point-five this year. Our liabilities are up a bit because our cash position has been weaker this year. So we're actually holding our invoices longer than we have normally held and paying them when they're due. And so it's obviously increasing our, our liability section. And you can see our net assets, one-point-nine, where we were at last year to one-point-four. Net assets basically is what we retain in the conference, that's our reserve. And you can see this year that based on where we are from last year, that we've used about five-hundred-thousand dollars of our reserve right now in order to stay, keep everything going here in the conference. Share a little bit about our income. As I said, our income comes from tithe. And you can see here, this is gross tithe. I've got another income because there's two different types of income we've got. We've got gross and net tithe. The difference is gross tithe is what everybody gives here in the conference. Part of that, we send up to the North American Division, the union. And so of the seven-point-three million, on the next slide, you'll see what we keep. We actually don't keep that much here in Minnesota. But you can see, and it's really tough to figure out how to budget, because I never know how, how money's going to come in on a month-to-month basis. And so I've looked at the last five years and tried to take an average of what comes in on a monthly basis. And that's how I calculate my budget. But you can see I'm off a little bit because obviously this year, even though we're up by seven-point-eight percent in tithe, to budget comparing to budget, I'm down a little bit. You can see in offerings and donations, we have a slight gain in offerings and donations this year. Appropriations are what we get from the Mid-America Union or North American Division for projects that are, money comes back to us, that has to be used for a very specific project. Those are slightly up this year. Our investment in direct operating income, we do have investments of about three million dollars here at the conference. Those investments, a lot of it is from the churches, because a lot of churches invest through us and we invest the money for them. The other part is, a lot of you have locally funded employees. In other words, you as a conference, you as a church, hire somebody and you pay for them. In the old days, until about four years ago, we as an organization could just net those and we never showed it to anybody because they just netted off the income and expense. Four years ago, they changed the accounting rules and said, now we've got to show the expense and the income on our books. And so this is the income, we get about, last year had three-point-four, this year we're at two-point-seven. Um, part of that is because over the summer months, our church schools who don't get a lot of money during the summer, they hold their payments back and then we start catching up. Because just because they don't have students in school, we still pay the teachers. We don't expect the teachers to go without pay for two months while there's no school in place. And that's the difference there. And then our other income, basically what that is, is that we bill our employees for some healthcare and those type of things. And that's where that other income comes from. And some miscellaneous income that's really hard to place anywhere, but most of it's from what we give to our employees. Here's income with donor restrictions. Now, these are restrictions where the donor sends money into us or the union. The money we get back, and we get about five-and-a-half percent back from the North American Division and the Mid-America Union, but it all comes back restricted. We can't use it for anything other than what it is. And ninety percent of that money that comes back has to be used for evangelism. And so the only time we give that money out is when we do, when we disperse our evangelism funds out to the different churches upon their request. So you can see appropriations, our appropriations are up this year, four-hundred-and-eighty-seven thousand from last year. Offerings and donations are also up, which is known across the conference because that's how we got a seven-point-eight percent increase, also because those offerings and donations have helped. And then other income is slightly up also this year. Now I want to look at net tithe. So I showed you, we had seven-point-three million of gross tithe. Five-point-seven is what we keep in the conference. So that's what we get to run the conference on, is five-point-seven million dollars. We had six million last year at this time, so we're fairly close to where we were last year in this regard. Our offerings and donations, they don't change because obviously it's the same as, they were appropriations received. We were a lot higher in appropriations last year than we were this year. Investment and direct operating income stay the same. Deferred income without donor restrictions, other income and released. Now what's released from restriction? That's money that we move from this port over to the operating side of our book. So it's money that's released to help us pay bills for the rest of the conference. So evangelism is restricted money. And so when we get requests for evangelism funds, we get to move that money from restricted to unrestricted and we get to pay it out of our, we get to pay it from that. Here's our actual tithe, we have a gain of seven-point-eight-eight percent. For every one percent increase in tithe, it's about an extra hundred thousand dollars to the conference. Which, if you want to place that, that hundred thousand is equivalent to one employee. Because that's about what our annual budget is for employees, is about a hundred to a hundred-and-ten thousand dollars. And so when we have decreases in tithe, it makes it really difficult. This year, we have an increase, but this is going to help us hopefully recover from the past couple of years. Because the past couple of years, we've actually had a deficit. We've ended with a deficit budget and a deficit at the end of the year, which means we pulled reserves to cover it. This year, we actually started the year with a deficit budget. We are probably going to end up with a deficit this year, but not as large because we have a tithe gain. So you can see our actual last year was six-point-eight. We budgeted seven-point-eight, we're at seven-point-three million, that's a five-hundred-and-thirty-nine-thousand-dollar gain. So that's helping right now cover our expenses, it's also helping my cash position. The cash position for the conference has been pretty weak this year. Um, just to give you an idea, I need about one-point-two million dollars a month to cover my expenses. Of that, the twenty-eighth of every month, I need eight-hundred-thousand dollars in the bank. Because that's what payroll costs for all of our employees here in North, in the conference. And so when the twenty-eighth comes around and I don't have that much money, I start sweating. Because I cannot not pay our employees. And so what we do is, then we have to hold some of our bills back and make sure we have the money for our employees there. Because ninety-eight-and-a-half percent of our money comes from tithe. Um, just to give you, Eric was telling how many members we got. We had, last year we had eleven-thousand-seven-hundred-and-fifty-three, this year we got twelve-thousand-and-forty-nine. What would you say now, we know that's not how many people are attending church, more than likely. And we know some of those people don't pay tithe. But the only way to accurately figure out the tithe per capita is to take the membership list. Because we don't know how many of those people pay tithe, how many of them don't, how many of them are children and this type of stuff. So across the division and across the world, they look at the total memberships to figure out, what is the tithe per capita per member? So here in Minnesota, anyone that want to guess what the tithe per capita or how much per year an individual member gives to this church? A little more than that. It's six-hundred-and-thirty-five, is the average per capita that members give across Minnesota. Now, what do you ask, what is it for the North American Division? About the same, not much higher. He asked, what is it for the world church? About nine-hundred dollars a year for the world church. And so we have twenty-five million members in the church worldwide. And we're only averaging nine-hundred dollars a year. That, we know a lot of members and we know a lot of the membership maybe isn't correct. But we also know that a lot of, um, members struggle. If we're struggling financially because of inflation and cost of everything, we know our members are also. And I want to show my appreciation because the seven-point-eight-eight percent is there because of each of you. You've been faithful in your tithes and all our churches have been faithful in the tithes in giving to us. I just wanted to show you this. This is our tithe growth compared to, how many of you know what the Consumer Price Index is or CPI? You hear it on the news all the time. That's the true cost of inflation, they say. Most of us know, so if you look at tithe, you can see our actual tithe growth. At the end of twenty-twenty-four, we were at eleven-point-seven million. But if you can take that back to CPI, you can see based on CPI, our tithe would only been a little, wouldn't have even been four-thousand dollars comparing it to nineteen-eighty-five dollars. The last time the church tithe and the Consumer Price Index were the same, was nineteen-eighty-five. Since then, the Consumer Price Index basically says, even though our tithe has grown, the effect of that is we can't afford anymore than we did back in nineteen-eighty-five. Because the value of that money isn't worth what it is today. That's what it's telling us, even though we have eleven million dollars, only worth four, four million dollars basically. Because of the growth in that and our expenses. How about our expenses? Seven-point-one million this year compared to six-point-six last year. That's in our program functions. Program is ministry, education, and I'll show you breakdown of this. Supporting services functions is the conference office and the, um, locally funded employees and that type of thing. Here's program services, church ministries, that's pastors, Bible workers, um, anybody that works out in the church, four million dollars. So of that five million dollars you saw for total tithe, five-point-seven million, four of it goes to pay our pastors and our workers on the front line. Then you got education, now two-point-five, that number is high because we have, as you heard Eric say, we have thirty-five teachers in this, thirty-five people working in our schools or probably more than that. Only nineteen of those are actually paid for as part of the conference, the rest of them are locally funded. And we build a school out for about three-and-a-half million dollars a year. So even though our money is up, we get that money back to help us cover other costs in the conference, is where that comes from. Then we got publishing, which is our LE program and other program services. That's, um, IT, um, information technology, some trust services money, that's what's in the other program services. Supporting services is basically, as it says, conference administration. So that's the three of us sitting here with whatever's in the office and what it costs us to run our office is seven-hundred-and-sixty-eight thousand. You can see the auxiliary payroll, that's all the employees that we have that work outside in the churches that the churches pay for or the schools pay for. One-point-seven million dollars is coming back from there. What's the retirement contribution? Many of us who work for the church used to work in what was called the defined benefits. That's the old retirement plan that used to be in place before January first of two thousand. I happen to be on the defined benefit program. There aren't too many people here that probably are. Are you on it, Jeff, too? So I have fourteen years in the old plan. That money there, we are contributing because like social security, the defined benefit program wasn't funded very well by the church. And so they have been charging us eleven-point-four percent a year to make sure that the retirees within the church continue to get their retirement dollars. Now, it's interesting when you think about this. One of the last things I heard from the retirement office is, is that we have somewhere between ten and twenty people drawing retirement that have drawn retirement longer than they worked for the church. In other words, they retired at sixty-five and they've been drawing retirement now for more than forty years. And I think there's somewhere between ten and fifteen of our retirees over the age of a hundred. Now, it's interesting, you know, we, we say because of our health message, it helps our longevity. This is one instance that it would be nice not to help the longevity. That's right. Then we have conventions and meetings, office, office operations, a hundred thousand. And other supporting services, that's basically what we pay for medical, um, our insurance costs, anything like that that comes out of other supporting services on this side of the, on our expenses. So what does that actually mean? It means at the end of the day, if you take our income minus our expenses, and I'm, at this time of the year, it's where I expect it to be. Because the first half of the year, we, it's the lowest part of the tithe, we're sitting at a one-million-dollar loss year-to-date. That will come in before the end of the year. And so hopefully by the end of the year, I'll be closer to two or three-hundred-thousand-dollar loss. But the tithe is what makes that difference. You know, cash is what we live on. You know, tithe is great and most of the, and you know, I can truly say this, we are a cash business. Not many businesses are because tithe is cash to us. Now, some churches, we accrue their remittance, in other words, we don't get their money by the end of the month. So we have to report it anyway. But you can see here right now, at the end of August, of regular cash, I had eighteen days available of cash in the conference. That means that if, that at the end of September, when it, end of October, when it came to cover payroll, I couldn't cover payroll with that right now. But because I know all the churches are going to send me their tithe in for September, like for October, I'm going to get enough money in October to cover payroll. But we have eighteen days. Now you look at that straight green line, that ninety days and a hundred and eighty. Last September, was it, Jeff? Sometime last year, we went to, we went to our board and said, you know, we need to set a, a target, a goal that we need to do. And we said, over the next two to three years, we want the conference to get to at least ninety days of cash available. That means I got a lot of work to do, or the conference has a lot of work to do to get to ninety days of cash. Now, the North American Division and the General Conference, after the scare of COVID, said you really need to have six months of cash available. So that's a hundred and eighty days. That's six months of cash. Now what is, how much money, how much cash would that have to be that we held at the conference? If I spend one-point-two million dollars a month, that means I have to have three-point-six million dollars in the bank account at the conference. And if I went to six months, I'd have to have over seven million dollars of cash available. And a lot of the church members would complain because you're not supporting any ministry out there. Because you're just holding the money in your coffers. But the truth of the matter is, it takes a lot of pressure off if we do have some reserves in place for a rainy day.
Yeah, um, let's explain what this means a little bit. On the, for, for the reserves, what that, what that, when you say seventeen days, what that means is right now, if, if money stopped coming in, we would be able to tell our employees, you're out of a job in seventeen days. Okay, so, uh, our goal is to be able to give them three months. Uh, and that's not a lot, uh, you know, that's why the North American Division is saying, really, you should be able to give them six. It's just not practical for us, we can't get there, but we do need to be, I, I call this line our canary in the mine. When we're operating below that, we're in big, big trouble. Need to get to where we're at least being responsible to our employees to be able to give them three. But the one thing I'm, I'm seeing here, since May, our line is starting to head up a little bit.
Yes, it is, we are in a positive direction. We got down to, actually in May, we were down to twelve days of cash available, so. Um, this, and this is cash that's in the bank, it's not cash that I have sitting off in a, in a CD or a bank or an investment. So if I go to the next one, now this is just a different way of looking at it. You can see what, this is cash between what's in the bank and what's non-pooled. And non-pooled cash is what I have sitting somewhere earning better interest than in a checking account. And the church for many years did not consider non-pooled cash as accessible. I can access my cash if I needed it within twenty days or less. So you can see twenty-four and twenty-five were pretty flat at less than twenty days. Now, if you take my non, and my, my pooled and non-pooled cash, you can see actually if I was to pull, everything that I have in reserves that's sitting in a savings account somewhere, I actually have forty-two days. So as Jeff would said, I could actually pay my employees for one month now and cover every expense. But that's getting rid of every bit of cash I have, there'd be no cash left in the organization. Um, and so that's the one I look at all the time, is this one to say, all right, where I am at with cash. And I look at the other one and say, can I make it through the month without having to pull reserves? And so far this year, I have not had to pull any money out of reserves. The money has come in to be able to allow me to meet all my expenses. Just some key indicators to let you know, current ratio, what that basically means, for every dollar that I owe, I have a dollar and seventy-five cents in assets. So I'm actually in a pretty good position because I have more money available to me to spend than I have that I owe. Liquidity, that should be over a hundred percent. I'm at eighty-five percent right now. And basically liquidity is a measurement of our expenses. On an average month, do you have enough liquidity to come in and meet all your expenses? And right now it's saying I'm fifteen percent short. Expenses per day, costs, it costs me for every day that we run the conference, it costs- Costs, it costs me for every day that we run the conference, it costs me forty-nine thousand dollars a day. For every day that we run, and of that forty-nine thousand, ninety-seven percent of that is salaries and wages. So there's not much other money out there that we're spending on, except for salaries and wages. And here's just another way of looking at cash and cash equivalents and cash and stuff with investments. Available working capital. What's working capital? Working capital is the money we have available within the conference from reserves and other things to allow us to continue to function. And the way it's calculated is, is you take all your cash available and basically it says you have to have enough working capital to cover fifty percent of your expenses. Well, if I take all the cash and everything I've got in place, I don't have enough working capital right now. I'm negative working capital right now. Which means if I had, I took fifty percent of my expenses, I don't have enough cash to cover fifty percent of my expenses right now. So my budget was seventeen million dollars. That means I need to have enough stuff to cover nine and a half million dollars. We don't have quite that much in working capital right now. And then the tithe increase, you can see, you can see last year at this time, we were a negative in tithe. Luckily, we came out and broke even with tithe, but up through this time last year, we had a three point three percent decrease in tithe. This year, you can see this year we're at more than eleven percent turnaround from this time last year. Which is great. I appreciate that because that means the membership out there is taking, is being faithful in what they're giving to the church. That's the presentation on the conference finances and stuff. Um, I'm willing to answer questions or I can go through Maplewood Academy right now, too, and then, okay, any questions in regards to what I presented? Yes. Yes, we've had long discussions in that at the, at the conference office in regards to making sure our membership is faithful in their tithe paying. I agree with you. Um, we're going through a generational shift within the church, and the church is really struggling with this generational shift. Because the baby boomers and the generation before baby boomers never questioned, they just gave tithe without asking where it went and how it was being spent. Now, probably most of us baby boomers are at fault here a bit because it's our children that are basically asking, we want to know where the money goes. We want to make, we want to see results. We want to know how it's being spent. And so that generation is not as, not as open when it comes to just giving tithe into the, into the storehouse.
I think there's a bigger problem, though. Um, the way that we do evangelism right now and baptize people so fast, I suspect that a big part of this is that we're baptizing people and making them members before they even understand what tithe is and have committed to it. And so I remember, I know as a pastor, I actually started backtracking that I would baptize. And as we're going through Bible studies, we would talk about tithing. And then I would ask them, how are you doing? And, and when people hadn't started the habit, same thing with Bible study and prayer. Um, and so I'd get close to the end of the Bible studies and I would say, you know, we're, we're getting close to where you can be baptized, but there's a couple of things you're still missing. So what we're gonna do is we're gonna stop Bible studies for a while and we're just gonna work on these habits. And work on Bible study and prayer, daily Bible study and prayer. We're going to work on faithful tithing. Um, and maybe they're dealing with smoking. Let's work on that together. And I walk with them through it until they're, they're discipled in a way. And then when they're, when they're, they've got these habits established, we're like, all right, let's go. You know, and so this, this, I think that this is, is partly our fault of, of not working with new members in a way. I mean, because we almost, it kind of makes us uncomfortable to talk about it. But really, we need to.
No, that's very true. I know I've been asked a couple of times by people who are recent baptized. They came out of a Lutheran church. And they're used to basically paying ten percent of their, whatever they gave for tithe, to the church. And that, they didn't think about it. Has that covered the expenses of the church, covered the pastor and stuff? Our denomination has a very different um, strategy when it comes to that, because the ten percent goes to cover the salaries and wages of all the people who work for the church. They go to the storehouse. And somebody asked me one day what the storehouse was, because I says, well, you have to go back to the biblical times on the storehouse. Because it actually comes back to the time of Moses and the children of Israel when, before the temple was built. And God gave Moses the instructions to build the temple. But he says, go to your members and ask them to give of their gold, their silver and things and bring them to the storehouse, which was the temple, so that we can build a temple. And they got it. That is true. They built it. In fact, Moses had to tell them to quit bringing the money and the gold and silver because they had too much. Well, if you bring it down to today and you bring that, we don't have temples per se today. The conference is basically the temple. Because even in the days of yore, they had smaller temples in other cities, but they, the main temple was in Jerusalem. That's where everybody came and that's where all the storehouse was. It covered the priest salaries and things. Today, the conference is the temple because we pay all the pastors here in Minnesota Conference. The storehouse is the conference. And the money that comes to the conference, that's why I'm as transparent as I can be with what I've just showed you today, because you know where the money goes. It goes to, ninety-five percent of our funds go to pay pastors and teachers in this conference and some of, and the office staff. We're not frivolously putting it off somewhere else. It would be nice to have extra money to put somewhere else in reserves. But it's important because the truth of the matter is, without the frontline workers, it makes it very difficult. Churches would suffer because they don't have a pastor out there leading them. Teachers would suffer because we don't, the schools would suffer because we don't have teachers.
You know, when we, we look at this picture, it's not very, doesn't sound good. We need to be very intentional in promoting tithe in the church. And especially for those who are keen with the general conference session, there was a, something was, that was added in the church manual, especially to the leadership. You find, you come to a church, you find elders, elders and church leaders who are not faithful in returning their tithe. How can they start teaching the New Converse to give tithe and offering where less they themselves are not doing that. So we need to look at each other's eyes and say, let's be serious on this matter, especially we'll start with the leadership of the church, the elders, the church board members. And when that fire gets from there, I believe it will, it will make a difference. So I think we should look at each other and we talk about this. Thank you.
Well, one thing I can say about this, and I've been encouraged because I sit in my office every day and I see the funds that come in. And I know a lot of the churches are struggling. Got some small churches here. And if you have members out there. And some of these churches don't have any church budget. And I know for a fact that they have to hold the first two weeks of the next month's tithe so that they can pay the bills, keep the church open. And so they don't, there's no way, otherwise they don't have no church. And so I understand what's happening with small churches. From as members don't give, it impacts what happens in the local church. Also our local churches, not enough offerings. I see that in conference. I would hope they would, but you know, and a lot of people out there that, you know, um, at the end of the day, come down to it and say, do I buy food or do I buy this? And I challenge them, yes, God will never let you starve. But it's very difficult when you're, I know people who have taken that test. God work wonders in. I think two years ago, I was here and we actually put a challenge out to them the last two months and said, we challenge you to pay tithe. And if you don't see God bless you, come to the conference and I'll give you your tithe back. And ask. So I, oh, God will bless when you give tithe. But that's the message out there. It's not just that we need the money. It's more about a relationship with Christ. That relationship is important. Out of that relation, everything. I work with two companies, two investment companies that we have, we have our money split between two different companies. And so, yes, any reserves that we have, don't just sitting as checking accounts, we transfer them into an investment portfolio where, and over the last year, they've gained just under ten percent in value. So the intention is, yes, when we have reserves, is to make those reserves continue to work for us by investing them to get a return on that investment also. But I agree with you that, you know, the more we can educate our members in how the money is used, the better they understand it and the more likely, and as I said, it's all about a relationship. You know, I can remember growing up when you, and maybe many of you do too. When you act, when somebody says they're gonna do a stewardship sermon, what would happen to most of the churches? Your membership would be about half of what it was the previous Sabbath. The problem is, is that, you know, we always thought that stewardship was about money. That's the way it's been presented many times. But I, you know, since I've been here as the treasurer and stuff, I present it from a fact that stewardship, money is the least of the items of stewardship. Stewardship is about discipleship, about, about making people and connecting people to Christ and developing that personal relationship that you have also. That's what stewardship is about. And out of that stewardship flows the money that God wants you to give. Any other questions in regards to conference finances before I move into Maplewood Academy? Yes.
There, we talked briefly about the younger generation. And I think we have to look closely at what more of them. Do they trust conference? Do they understand how this and if not, then we have to do our part educating, understand, be transparent. I love that about my husband. Believes in transparency, has nothing to hide. This is God's money. It's not our money. And he will be held accountable. And I don't think he worries about quite. But one of the other things that I believe is an issue is that people get their hearts touched by what they see, what they hear. And trips, all the things that are in addition to the storehouse. So what happens? Absolutely, you read my mind. And while I think those are hugely important, it can't take off, right? So we have to do our part to members. And the one other thing, if you let me get if you could stop me really. Is that we, I'm not at conference. I just hang out with him. But you know, pray. Pray for the storehouse. It is our custom. And if it's okay with all of you, could I challenge you to pray about tithe to the storehouse? And I truly believe that the God of the universe is what we pray. He hears that. He sees the desire of our heart. So I just, to encourage you, pray like mad. Talk to your them under. Don't stay away from the church when the treasurer comes to do a sermon on this topic or a pastor. Come, support it, get excited about it. Because God is waiting to put those blessings so much that we just can't hold it all. Thank you.
Thank you. I haven't really done a study on age and membership, but I've done a study on demographics, you know, like um, different ethnicities and that type of thing. We track the tithe giving by Hispanic, African, and then everybody else is dumped into one bucket. So we track that. Um, right now, if we were to look at our tithe, about forty percent of our tithe comes from the ethnicities and sixty percent from this other bucket over here. And if you look at our membership on a whole, our membership is split about sixty percent for ethnicities and forty percent this other bucket over here. So it doesn't quite equate that way with tithe. Um, and, and, and mainly because a lot of our ethnicities are in the lower wage earning capacity. So they just don't have the lower wage where the, this bucket over here is in the higher wage earning, so it makes a difference. And so those are studies that I've been wanting to get into and look at more in regards to that and also looking at age groups. I mean, I know the church has done an age group study in regards to the baby boomer, and this is nationwide. This isn't just the Adventist church. The baby boomers were the number one group of individuals that gave money across every platform and every charity across North America right now. Every charity, everybody who accepts donated money is feeling the loss of that large pool of the baby boomers. Because the baby boomers were the largest workforce in the United States. Two years ago, the millennials became the largest workforce in the United States. And so there's that transition. And I think, didn't we say, Jeff, that there was a, that we're gonna lose twenty-five hundred pastors or something like that over the next five years? We're gonna lose, and we don't have twenty-five hundred pastors to replace twenty-five hundred pastors who are retiring. I just, there's a statistic out and I just saw it the other day that every day, ten thousand baby boomers retire. Every day. So you can see the impact that's gonna have as we start going through. Yes. Yes, there is a huge, and there is a huge group of, of that Generation Xers, because I have friends in other churches and they're in that age group that left the church. Generation Xers were one of the groups that left the church in in big, big sections.
I kind of find it interesting that we have worldwide, about thirty percent of people return tithe. Um, when we look at our membership numbers versus our attendance numbers, it's kind of similar. There's about thirty percent of our people that are active. So I think that if we actually had good attendance numbers. that the, the faithfulness in tithe would be much higher than that. The problem is not people sitting in our pews for the most part, who are being unfaithful. Tithe is that people aren't even in church.
Right.
Not, they're just not, not that important.
Right. Something else has become more important. I mean, there, the church did a study in the late seventies, early eighties. About 70% of the Adventist membership gave tithe. They did a study two years ago and that number now is down between 29 and 32% of the churches paying tithe. And so you're right, it comes down to how many people are actually in church. And let's face it, since COVID, when we got all this new technology out there that you could sit at home in your pajamas and watch church, we're still struggling as a church to get our membership back.
We've got half an hour, so let's move on, shall we?
Let's go on. I'll, I'll rush through these slides as much as possible with Maplewood, but. Yes. Okay.
Um, how much debt does the conference owe?
We have no debt. At the current time.
I guess I had one quick question, but make it fast. I'm trying to say this in a way that doesn't get me in trouble. What, what percent, like, okay, like Lorena brought up, there's Maranatha, Amazing Facts, ABN, all these different ministries, forty ministries. How much of tithe that would normally have been returned to the conference being diverted within Minnesota, a guesstimate?
I, I have, I, I don't even know where to start because number one, those organizations have fundraising down to.
Yeah.
The best. Cause that's the only way they survive. They don't get any other money.
The truth is though, that most of them, if they know it's tithe, won't accept them. Three ABN accepted, they will. But, uh, the, the rest, for the most part, um, it is written Voice of Prophecy, those kinds. If they know it's tithe, they will not. And which is right. That's, that's what they should be doing.
Yep. There, it's, there is no way, I mean, we've talked about this with them. There is, that's another, that's very difficult, not as many now as used to be. The longer they're in the United States, the less money they send home and the more they give to their local conference. So when they're first here, they may send more home, but the longer they're here, the more they give here.
Eric has actually been.
Yes. He's been very dedicated with his group to make sure that they understand that.
Yeah, quickly.
Do these, uh, organizations like the Voice of Prophecy and other ones pay tithe from the investments they get?
I don't know. I assume that, I, I do know they pay some tithe. I just don't know on what basis it's done. Not sure. Let's go on to Maplewood and then if there's other questions towards the end, we can ask, ask more. Just to show you, I just want to do these quick. I went back to 2010 and did studies on Maplewood Academy. And you can see that since 2010, they had 95. And then it got up to 2012 and up 2012 and 13, I believe are when they had the online learning program here. And so that's why your numbers topped out there is that that's when they had the online learning program through Maplewood Academy. You can see since then, there's been a steady decline at Maplewood Academy. And as Jeff said, there is no tuition number that will ever pay 100% of what it costs for us to operate Maplewood Academy. But the average enrollment for the last 15 years is the one line that's 88.2. Then 10 years, 84.5. And the last five years, it's 73.8.
And this year it's up to 87.
And this year it is 87. Donations received, same kind of thing has happened here as has happened across multiple areas. You can see, and the donations are what was coming in to cover the shortfall that tuition did not cover. That's what your donations are for. And this was considered worthy student and Maplewood Academy operating fund. And you can see it went from about 424,000, 450,000. In 2024, it was down to 285,000 was the funds that were received. But if you look at our expenses, the opposite is true. Here's the earnings surplus and decrease. Basically what I'm, this is the earnings, basically, you know, if you make a hundred dollars this year, you carry that forward to next year. And if you make a hundred dollars next year, you get $200 in your retained earnings. And when you have a loss of $500, you go negative. So that's what this is telling us, that from 2015 to 2018, we had earnings surpluses. A lot of that came in because we had big donations during those years. We had some trusts come doing things. Then in 2019, 2020, those were two years that were impacted because of COVID. 2020 especially was a big, because that impacted everything, giving in everything. So that means that they went from a $41,000 positive net cash, net asset, down to 328,000. In Naaman's language, that means the academy was insolvent. They had no money. They would have been insolvent if it hadn't been for the conference. The conference has been the backbone for them. Then in 2021, they got another large donation. They came in and basically paid the debt off and everything, which brought them back above. And that kept them through 2022. Then 2023 and 2024 happened. No large donations came in, and that's what caused us to go back down again to become with no cash. Now, the only reason the academy has this is because I made this recommendation because I believe in the academy, is as I told the academy to make sure you pay your local vendors, the people in Hutchinson you deal with. Cause if you don't pay them, you're not going to last very long. And I said, pay the conference last. Well, I didn't think it'd be quite as much as that. But basically at the end of 2024, um, they owed me about 1.1 million dollars in cash. Now, the good news about that is we had some alumni step forward in June of this year and said, we're going to take care of that debt. And since June of this year up to today, they've raised just a little over $900,000 that have come into the conference to cover that cost. So you can see this payable at 852, that's where it was at the end of 2020, in June of 2025. And that is down a bit because of the 464,000 that came in in June. And so since then though, that number has come down even more because since June is when we've got another 500,000. So currently right now, the academy owes the conference somewhere around $300,000. Now, they get enough through tuition to cover all their local vendors and keep everything current. What they don't get enough of is to cover their payroll. And since the conference does their payroll, we bill them on a monthly basis, but that's what makes the debt keep going. Cause on a monthly basis, they're $90,000 short of covering payroll. And that's what we have told the academy to do because we can fund it. Now, last year I could do that because I had a stronger cash position. This year, I don't quite have the cash position I had last year. And so for me to try and carry a million dollars isn't going to happen this year just because I don't have the cash or I would have to pull my reserve cash to do that. So this is basically subsidy versus policy. The policy says that for subsidy, we, the subsidy should be calculated. North American Division has a wage factor. Let's just say it's $5,000 a month, $60,000 a year. The subsidy that the North American Division says is that for a boarding academy, as a conference, you should pay three times that annual wage factor. I should be giving the, the academy about $180,000 a year in today's dollars. You can see in 2024, we gave them $525,000. That comes out of that other two and a half percent of money that I am not paying my salaries and wages with. And so you can see that we as a conference believe in Maplewood Academy and we're doing everything we can to make sure it survives. But now it's even gone beyond what we can afford because of our financial position. Let's just look, I'm just going to ask, this is 2024, 2025, the actual expenses ended in June of 2025. Tuition, dorm and calf charges, 1.3 million. That's what they actually needed. Now, this is where it gets confusing because that 1.3 million, the way they bill their students, that's what they actually billed. But see that number down there that says worthy student? Of that 1.3 million, 600,000 of that needed to be covered by worthy student funds. They actually didn't receive 1.3 million in tuition funds. They received $700,000 of actual cash. 600,000 had to come from worthy student money. But they, and the conference gave 548,000. I know that number is good because I write the check every month to them. So I know that's a good number. They only got 281,000 of their shortfall. They needed, they were short $328,000 in worthy student money last year. Then you go down here, miscellaneous offerings and donations. We really don't know how to track that from a perspective. So I, whatever we get is just a bonus for us. Maplewood funds, they budgeted, they needed $440,000 of Maplewood funds. They got 88,000 last year. They were short $352,000 in Maplewood funds. Then they had scholarships. They actually had scholarships, just given, the money is given to them from other organizations. They also have scholarships that they provide for first year students and things. They actually needed 100,000. They actually received 123. So they got a little bit more money from scholarships than they did actually spend out on it. And then special project donation, we did some special projects at the academy last year. Some people have asked, why are you doing these projects at the academy if you have no money? Well, the problem is you can't keep the school open if there's certain things that need to be repaired. Those are going to come in and tell you, you can't. One of those was the cafeteria, our health inspector basics. He said, you need to do this, 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 if you want to cook. We had to do this, this, and this in the cafeteria and some other things that we had to do. So just to keep it running, we had to do some projects. And then rent income, that comes in from the rent that we get from the outside agencies and the rent we charge to our employees for the employee housing. So you can see here that our total income was 2.9 million. We actually only received 2.6. So there we were $388,000 short of making our budget last year. We had 2.95 million dollars in expenses, actual expenses. But we actually were a little over in expenses. We had a loss of $351,000 last year. Would have had it. We didn't. And why? Because that $467,000 of special donations that came in brought last year's loss into, but the problem is that 467 is from prior years also. Remember they owed the conference money. So all those donations came in in 2025, 2024, 2025, but they were from prior time also. So it makes 2024, 2025 look pretty good. But it's because of what, how the donations came in. Now let's look at this year's budget. Again, 80, we budgeted on 80 students because we didn't know what we were going to get. We actually have 87, which throws this number off by about 100,000, $120,000. Tuition fees, dorm and cafeteria, based on 80 students, we're going to receive 1.6 million. Of that, we know 605,000, we're not going to receive unless people come forward with worthy student money. So of that 1.5, we're only actually going to get 991,000 of actual cash. Rental income, we know is a good one because that is what we're charging our students and we're charging a couple entities that rent a couple buildings from us. $5,000 is what I, I just put a number in there for donations and offerings. Appropriations from the conference, I know that's a solid number because that's the number I gave them. And then the scholarships, I look through and see who gives money towards scholarships. That money is sitting on their books for scholarships. So that's a good number. And other income, they have some miscellaneous, so they need, they had 1.7 million dollars of income is all they were going to get in actual cash. Salaries and wages are 1.6. So if you look here, their only income was 1.7. Salaries and wages was 1.6. Now, why do you say our student wages are so high? 103,000. I'll tell you why. Last year in the great state of Minnesota, they decided that all student workers needed to get the minimum wage. So we used to be able to discount student workers and we used to charge $8.53 an hour. January 1st of last year, they all went up to the minimum wage in Minnesota, which is $11.13. That wasn't in the budget. So you can see on general operating expenses, 1.3. Total expenses for the 25, 26 school year of 3.1. We're 1.4 million dollars short of balancing the budget. Of that, 600,000 is worthy student and 794,000 is operating funds. That need, what I'm saying is that money there needs to be raised to balance the budget for this year. And it's a challenge we put out there. We've talked to the alumni. We've got a committee at the school that's working on this. They've taken it. They say, we're going to do it. And as Alder Scoggins has said, the money's out there. We just need to give the people good enough reason to give it to us. I want you to look at these, and this is something that Jeff and I worked on together. And you, um, basically Maplewood days of operating. We did the same thing here. They need 90 days of operating cash. You can see for 2020, 2021, 2022, 2023, you can see all of those were all negative. They did not have enough to cash to operate that academy since 2020. That's the viability section there. So basically we had a study that was done by, we brought in a group of people who were ex, who were retired educators from within the church. And they did a large study for us along with a finance person. And basically they said, if it wasn't for the conference, your academy is basically bankrupt. Wouldn't pay its bills. But we believe enough, and I believe enough in the academy, that I'm willing to keep it going. Maplewood 2025 budget, there's the needed, that's what we expect to get. Realistic expectation, we're going to get 1.5 million, which is what I showed you. We need to raise 1.5 million in order to make the academy viable for 2024, 2025, 2026. And here's the donations. And you can see the donations, the big ups is when we had a special donation come in. They went out either on alumni or we had a individual who passed away because in his trust, he left money to the Maplewood Academy. That's the big jump. The extraordinary donations is the, the regular donations are those. Without extraordinary donations, the academy would be in a lot worse condition than it is today right now because of those extraordinary donations. And here's our debt. You can see that if we hadn't got that $467,000 in June, you can see the lines, they don't change. Without fundraising for the academy to balance our budget, it's going to continue to grow.
Thank you. The, I get confused on all the numbers. I don't know about y'all, but, uh, bottom line is, is, is at least we have a clear picture now of, of what we're needing to, um, what, what our task is each year. I've been in contact with, uh, Shenandoah Valley Academy and they said, 10 years ago, we were in exactly the same situation as you are. Um, and she's been very, very helpful. And what they did was they, they started a development program that has been increasing and increasing and increasing over the years. It takes some time to do it. Um, but they had a donor that came forward and said, we'll, we'll, we'll get the, the development program started because this has to happen. There needs to be consistent, consistent communication and consistent work on this. And now they're bringing in plenty of money to be able to cover this shortfall in tuition, which just is a fact of life. Uh, and so, uh, that's one of the things that we're really working, we're having to deal with, because we're in a kind of a catch 22 right now. Um, we, we, we don't have money to hire a development director to raise money. So, you know, it's kind of one of those things that we need to figure out how to, how to get this going. But I, I really believe that if we do, that, that there's, there will be consistent people come in. Because we, we're, we're seeing two, three, four hundred thousand dollars come in a year without even asking. So that tells me that if we were out there actually working and communicating and talking to people, that that would easily go up. So anyway, that's where we're at. We're almost out of time and there is supper in about seven minutes downstairs. Questions on Maplewood or anything else, whatever you would like to ask us. Oh, okay. Okay. Yeah. Great, great question. The, we've been talking about this quite a bit and we've been, we've sent out some, some communication about, about this. The, the long, the, the, the short version of the long story is that when the, the. is that when the, the capital campaign started, the, the new building was going to cost about two million dollars. Then COVID hit, and by the time COVID was done, the cost was up above five million. And so it simply, it turned out to just be impossible to do. But we also have had people coming in and looking at the building and what needs to be, and they're saying, this building is solid, and so it needs some repairs. And so what we did was, we talked to the, the donors that had given significant amounts of money. They, and said, would you, what would you like to do with it? Would you like to put it here, would you like to put it there? And, and a lot of them said, put it into the building that we've got. And so the, the, I don't know if you've seen it recently, but the cafeteria has been significantly upgraded. It looks really good, it does. And there's a bit more that we need to do. The drainage problems have been fixed now. The, the, the water problems that we've, we've had, that's done. New boiler's been put in, so we're well on our way. We need to make it handicap accessible, and that's, that's way more money than we have to be able to do that. And we need to put in a sprinkler system, and those are, those are big ticket items. But that's where we're at on, on the cafeteria.
And the money that was given to the capital fund is invested through the conference. So it is still, the money is, it is still earning interest and stuff, and there's still a core amount there, about, about a million dollars.
Good. Anybody else? On any top? Yeah, I guess that depends on what you call fully. It's, it's being used, no doubt. It, it definitely is. And so, I guess the, the best answer would be yes. Are we full of people? No, because we, we don't have, you know, we, we're just, we're understaffed. But there, we're, like, for instance, there's one big room that's never been finished, but there's storage stuff in there constantly. Pastors coming in, I came in, we needed a place to put our stuff. A new employee came in. We had to just move out of, out of the Moose Lake Church. All that stuff is in there, you know, so it's constantly being utilized. So there's, there's no wasted space right now, nothing. Does that answer your question? Okay. Anybody else? Okay, up here, gosh.
I don't know about anybody else, but I'm looking at fifteen thousand, one million, five hundred.
For Maplewood.
For Maplewood. Now, I'm looking at it from a human point of view, and that number sounds overwhelming to me. And so I guess the question would be, am I the only one thinking it? The question would be, what if? We have no assurance, except that if God wants it, it will happen. So I think, just from my little, small world that I reside, that amount of money is a lot. And if we're spending that kind of money through the conference for the academy, could not that money be being used to be doing other things within the conference? What, what is the plan if it doesn't come in and God says, whoa, wait?
We're actually working on that right now.
Thank you.
Because if, if, if we have to close the, the academy, we still have the problem of needing to educate our young people. What do we do? So I don't have an answer to that yet. The ideal is definitely to be able to, to train our young people here, because when they leave to go be trained somewhere else, how much of the time they don't come back, right? And so, so that's definitely, and this is why we showed the, the one graph that had the blue and the orange. The blue is just kind of your bread and butter donations that come in. The, the orange line was the big donations, extraordinary donations that come in. I'd like to get more history on that one. Because it's, it's, it's like, it's almost like God works through that. Things get really bad, and boom, a big gift comes in. And, and maybe let me put an appeal here. Because those big gifts usually come because somebody remembered Maplewood in their will. And, and that's huge. And, and other organizations like 3ABN, and it is written in Voice Prophecy, they have massive planned giving offices. And we, and, and they're in people's living rooms all the time, and we're not. And so there's no way we can even compete. And so people for, don't even, people who absolutely adore, I just had a conversation not very long with somebody who just loves Maplewood Academy. And I said, have you put it in your will? And she's like, no, I didn't even think about it. 3ABN asked, so I put them in there. And I'm like, can you change it? Because, because really, people just aren't thinking about it. So number one, if you don't have a will, you need to. Just because it's responsible, and especially if you have children, okay, you need to do that. The conference will do this for you for free. Seriously, we will. You just, you just call us, we'll take care of it for you. And, and we don't tell you that, how much you have to give. But the only request is that you remember the mission in Minnesota somehow. And so, do think about that. And, and it also just makes me think that, that we need to pay attention to the way that God has led in the past. If it turns out that, because finances can close, we can have as, you know, we can be, you know, have as much faith as we want to, but if, if the cash position gets bad enough, we don't have a choice. Things, things just have to close. And if that happens, then we do need to make a plan. And we need to still invest this, you know, the significant amount of money into providing scholarships for our kids to get an Adventist education somewhere else. That's the second best.
In depth about the finances of Maplewood, and they will come with a recommendation. And if need be, we'll call us the constituency to show you the true picture, and you will guide us into terms of that.
Yeah. There, there, we're, we're talking about the possibility of a special constituency just for Maplewood at the end of the year, beginning of next year, something like that. Not to talk about closing, I don't think we're there. But just to talk about what can we, what do we need to do to make changes, to, to, to get, to get things on our feet? Because it would be such a loss, such a strategic loss to, to lose Maplewood.
Since I have been here, I've only been in the conference four years, twice. It looked pretty dim for Maplewood Academy because of what they owed the conference. And twice, a significant donation has come in that has risen the academy above it again. So, you know, as you said, maybe God's testing our faith a bit here. Or, or maybe he's testing people out there that said, hey, have you remembered this? And all of a sudden, they say, man, I look at Maplewood Academy and what it did for me. And all of a sudden, a huge donation comes in, because it's God's school, this is God's conference, it's in His hands.
The other thing is, is when we run into crises like this, we, we really start to evaluate, are we doing what we need to be doing? Are we doing what God can bless? And those are, those are questions, and this is why that survey went out. And we've got a pile of data that we're trying to figure, to work our way through, a lot. And it's going to help drive some, some changes that, that need to happen. No school's perfect, but can we be better? Sure, we could. And so we're going to be working, working on that. So I expect exciting, interesting things coming in the, in the next few months about what this is going to look like. We're still, we're still working on. Go ahead, Jimmy.
A question about the buildings utilizing at Maplewood. Kind of bothers me a little. Adventist buildings paying rent. Have we talked to, have we exhausted our resources?
Wait, 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 which buildings? Which, who is this?
Any of the buildings.
We don't have any building right now that's not rented by an Adventist.
None.
No, they're all Advent.
There are business owners, but they're.
But they're all Adventist.
Yeah.
No, that's fine. No, that's one of the things we've made sure that when we have these buildings, they have to be tied to Adventists. We won't just rent to anybody.
Yeah, good. Well, I'm glad you asked it, because it's a shame for those kinds of things to be floating around when they're just not true. Yeah, good, thank you. Did I see another hand?
Like, we were, um, every year, like, not every year, but this year, we were at Maplewood. Um, after, for our saddle, for our canvassing program, we spent our last week, our last three weeks at Maplewood, two weeks at Maplewood Academy, we were literature. And we noticed, you know, when we were there in the summer, you know, for camp meeting, they have the rooms upstairs in a girls' room, those are empty. So I was always, I think it's because it's not enough students that go there, is that why? So, because we stayed up there for, um, the literary evangelist had, team had to stay up there. So I was just wondering, like, what do they do with that space? You know, like, I know they use it for camp meeting.
Yep, yep.
It's used for when they do academy days and bring students in to do a review of that. It's, it's used off and on during the year, it's used for alumni weekend. It's used for a lot of different occasions that happen at Maplewood Academy. It's just that the day-to-day stuff with students there, the third floor is shut down because we don't have enough students to actually open it.
It would be wonderful to have them all full of students, but then we would have trouble at camp meeting. Or no, cannot camp meeting, because that's summer, but, but, you know, where, where do you put kids when they do come? So it is nice having the extra room.
Yeah.
Yeah. Good.
So you talked a little bit about putting the conference, or the school, or even the church in your will. What does the conference have at their level to encourage people to do that? And what do they have available for, to help people do that?
Okay, that's an excellent question, thank you. We actually have two people in what we call the Plan Giving and Trust Services office. And any of those will actually, they will come and sit down with you if, if need be, and walk you through the process, what needs to happen. I just did it actually, because my, my kids had aged out, right? That we had made our will first when they were really young. By the time they hit eighteen, it needs to be totally different. And so I just went through the process, and what happened was, was I, I let the Plan Giving and Trust Services people know. They said, we're going to have a lawyer call you. He did, he walked us through the process. We signed stuff, you know, we went back and forth a little bit. Conference actually was not a part of it at all. This was all done totally through the attorney. Because it's necessary that we keep the conference away, because we don't want to ever do anything that's considered undue influence, exactly. And so we stay out of it. And, and he just tells us our options, and we say, this is what we want to do. We write it up, it gets signed, it's, it's done. So that's the way it's done. And then, I didn't pay anything, because the conference took care of all those costs.
And the Plan Giving and Trust Services office, in order to assist people with this, have, have a booklet that you can request that asks you questions that need to be in the will. And then that gets turned over to the conference attorney, and you actually deal with the attorney from there on in regards to developing your own will. So, so we try and stay, we provide the resources that you need, but we don't do any more than that.
And, and I like to scare people on this, especially if you have young children. Because if you don't have a will, guess who decides what happens to your kids? The, yeah, exactly, the government. So, no, I mean, even, no matter what you do, if you have young kids especially, man, take care of this. Make sure you have a, a will. Yeah. Good. All right, everybody's hungry at this point. Okay. Well, it was great, thank you, everybody. Appreciate it. Yeah. And we'll, we'll, at least I'll, I know that I'll stay around for a bit here. And so if you have other questions, we're happy to, to talk to you, okay? Let's, uh, maybe Elder McCua, would you close with prayer for us?
Dear Lord, we thank you so much for this moment you've given to us to discuss about your business in Minnesota Conference. We've talked about disciple making, we've talked about membership increase. We've talked about ministries, we've talked about finances, including Maplewood. In all this, in our discussion, it's been about building your kingdom before you return your glorious kingdom. At this time, Heavenly Father, we want to present our conference, Maplewood Academy, to your able hands, our churches around, our pastors, our elders. May you remind us that we are living in the last days, that your coming is very soon. Ignite the fire within us to do your work and to be faithful in returning the tithe and offerings to you, including thinking about writing the will to safeguard our families. May it be our challenge. Be with us tonight. Until we meet again, we ask you for your blessings, in Jesus' name. Amen.